I now call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. And note the attendance, six out of seven are here. Tom texted me he'll be here shortly. The second thing on the list is our agenda review. I will take a motion on that.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as published. We're going to open that up for discussion if we have any. Doesn't look like we have discussion, so let's vote.
Owen?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. The third item on the list is a superintendent evaluation timeline. Aaron is going to give an overview of the adjustments that we are proposing for that.
Yeah, I had sent out to each of you as well as we had portioned on board book as part of the agenda to make a slight update in lengthening our superintendent evaluation timeline this year. You know, I think there's a couple of things that went into that. Number one, we've had a lot of things going on with bond planning and budgeting and a lot of things that have taken our time. And so that's one. The other part is, you know, we do have three new board members, first time through the superintendent evaluation process. And there was some questions and about, you know, making sure we have all the information to make a very good informed judgment and informed evaluation on Scott and very fair and robust evaluation on that. And because of that Jennifer and I discussed, and I also consulted with Scott as well for transparency and because there are some potential contractual, you know, obligations that we have. But Scott and I discussed through those as well. But so the thought was to lengthen out the evaluation process that tonight would be as planned. And you see the edits in front of you in red on the superintendent timeline, evaluation timeline. Everything's the same other than anything that's been highlighted in red. So number one, we're going to hear from Scott tonight on his self-evaluation, the articles of evidence for his performance. The evaluation will now be extended to March 6th. So we can hear it after Scott's presents tonight. Then at the next meeting in March on the 11th, we will discuss our evaluations and develop our official summative evaluation with our consultant. And this year Jonathan Edmonds has agreed to be our consultant to help us compile our speak with one voice evaluation. And since he's been through this several times before, he'll be a good consultant for us this year. And I've already spoken with Jonathan and he's eager and willing and excited to help us with this process. So that would be at the March 11th board meeting, we would do that. We would then put together a draft of the summative evaluation based on all the feedback at that night as well as what Jonathan collects there during that session. We would put a draft summary of the summative evaluation together and present it to Scott prior to the April 8th board meeting. And then on the April 8th board meeting, we will meet to discuss and clarify the summative evaluation and to adopt it at that time. There are some changes to further report outs as noted in May about continued progress towards Scott's professional goals and his evaluation standards. But other than that, that's the main part that has been lengthened this year to allow us to give a very full and robust evaluation for Scott. Any thoughts, questions, comments?
Just a thought, I appreciate the slight extension of the timeline for a couple of reasons you stated. We did have kind of a lot of really pressing topics. And again, just to do a fair and thorough evaluation, not trying to rush it, but staying within our time confines. So I appreciate the extra little bit of time. I think it was a wise decision.
I concur on that. And Scott, you're fine with all aspects of this timeline extension?
Thank you for asking.
So if, I mean Jennifer, I appreciated your email, like talking about maybe some problematic questions or hangups last time. Is it fine, like if I'm going through it and I reach out, I could get clarification from either you or Aaron again, like, or am I just supposed to strictly just grind this out on my own if I've got questions?
I think that if you wonder what the standard is, then that is something that any, we can, you know, we can, we can help you figure out. And it's not like, you know, I gave my two cents on that one standard that continuously kind of causes us a lot of discussion. And you don't necessarily have to take my advice on that because it's all interpretation, right?
It'd be like a clarifying question, like how am I supposed to know? Or how would I go about finding this information kind of stuff? And then obviously formulating my own opinion.
Yes, absolutely.
Feel free to reach out. All questions are fair game, you know, especially if it's procedural or how do you rate against the standard or, you know, what should I, you know, what should we do with that? One thing on the standards, there are no half points, just as a clarification. We had that come up a couple of years ago. It's the whole points, so no point seven fives, no point fives. It's just whole point ratings in the numeric scale, just as a point of order.
And that kind of forces us to have a discussion, which is kind of the point of the evaluation. So we want to get deeper than just numbers and talk about like our specific ideas that back up the numerical values that we assign. So we'll have a robust discussion, I am sure, we have every, every time. So you might not have it all figured out when you submit your individual evaluations. And that's not as important as when we come together as a board to discuss the final evaluation.
There's one more point of order too. You know, we live into the no surprises mantra. If you have some, you know, poignant direct feedback for Scott, please make sure you talk to him before, you know, one-on-one with, even before that evening. That's just good practice to, you know, maybe inform him of some specific feedback that you'd like to provide for him, so.
And there will be things that, questions that you have and ideas for improving the process. And make a note of those because we will come back around at some point and say, how do we want to improve this for next time?
We're always into improving the process as we've kind of, you know, tweaked it a little bit this year. Every year it seems like we try to do better and better and better and better. We're not perfect at it yet, we haven't arrived yet. But I think every year it gets much more succinct, much more clear, much more robust. And, but it also doesn't drag out too, to be a four-hour grind session on this. So we are always open to feedback to always do better.
And thank you, Aaron, for arranging for having Jonathan come in and help us speak with one voice. I think that that will help us be more succinct, so appreciate that. Any other tips from former or continuing board members? Tom or Owen got anything?
Not real tips, I'm just thankful for the additional timeline. There's just been a lot, a lot going on in the district to think about, you know, bonds and finances and many things. And this was not on the, has not been on my radar for a while, so.
All right. Then let's go ahead and make, can we make a motion now to adopt the revised timeline? So that we get that out of the way?
I move to adopt the revised timeline and superintendent evaluation.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the revised superintendent evaluation timeline. Any discussion? All right, that's it.
Owen?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thanks for that, guys, and thanks for letting Aaron and I kind of lead on that extension a little bit. Appreciate that. And then next we have the superintendent's report. So Scott is going to report to us on the work that he's done that aligns with the standards and then his goals as well. So we will be assigning scores and giving feedback on the standards plus the goals.
So Jennifer, thank you. I think since I have both topics under the fourth, number four gen item, I'd like to switch them and go through the budget first.
Sure.
And then what we'll do, because the two, you know, are related a little bit. And then we'll get into the superintendent evaluation. I also wanted my teammates to come up as well while we have this presentation. And thank you, Kim, Leslie and Dan. And so tonight I'm going to take you through what we're calling a roadmap. Roadmap for building our budget for this coming year. And one of the main goals being to get our ending fund balance back to a healthy level. And we've identified that and I'll share all that with you. So as I'm up here presenting, please be sure you're taking notes if you want to ask questions because I've kept a whole section at the end just to address your individual questions. When I'm finished speaking, then I'm going to have each one of my teammates make a comment on the presentation, the information provided, and then we'll go from there. So we're calling this a roadmap. So we, and this is the first discussion we're having as a board to build the budget for next year. So all of this was by design to introduce you to this information, then you'll have it going forward. And I think I also stated this in my updates last week. Whatever you need going forward to help in your understanding, just say the word. I'm at your service to provide you with, with additional information and to work through these issues with you too, because there might be a solution that maybe we didn't think about. So I'm going to go ahead and start, I'm going to stand for this.
So the budget roadmap, there are some happy accidents here in terms of the alignment of when we're addressing this topic. And the timing actually works out perfect because next year has got to be the perfect year, honestly, to take on something like this. And the reason for that is, number one, it's the second year of the biennium. So we have a 51% funding on that. And that equals about $2 million. So second year of biennium. And we know that the fixed costs are with salary and wages. That's also really important. The funding beyond 2425, this current biennium, we don't know. So the time to take care of this budget strategy is now. And then we've made, these are what I call silver linings in our challenge. And we've made some pretty significant investments in our staff. And I want to talk to you about that as well, that we're obviously proud of and we'd like to share that with you. At the end of tonight, what I need as your superintendent is your support with the following four guiding principles. Because this is what's going to frame all of our work going into this budget building and then having the budget going into next year. And so number one is designing a 2425 budget to achieve a 5% ending fund balance. That's about $2.5 million. Number two, avoiding layoffs and protecting instructional days. At all costs, we're protecting people's jobs, not to lay off and not just to hack days, instructional days off the calendar. Because that's, well, it's only a one-time cost really. And we want to do what's best for kids also and protect, protect the quality of instruction that we're given. And number four, utilizing our SFSD strategic plan and the strategic yearly focus. I think that goes without saying, but it's important whenever we work through budget to keep in mind that we need to align 100% of the budget to what our directives are in the strategic plan. So you've all seen this, and Wally is part of our budget committee, and Wally's definitely seen this. And a couple of years ago, Steve Nielsen introduced this idea of a funding cliff. It was when we were going through COVID and we had a lot of federal dollars that were helping absorb kind of some of the shock. And really, it's this visual here that I want to draw your attention to. And here, what I want you to keep in mind is this idea that expenditures, salary, wages and benefits are increasing exponentially at a very fast rate. And what we have as a state school fund, it's not keeping pace with inflation and the costs of our expenditures. And so last, we started building a budget, this is from April 2022, for the following year, which was '22, '23. And we made sure to budget an ending fund balance with 1.5 million. So that was done two years ago, not this past year, but the year before. And so we went into the following year. And keep in mind that we were also working with our association on a new collective bargaining agreement. So we didn't quite know what the cost was going to be until late spring. And one of the things we found is that we underestimated the impact of these rising and escalating personnel costs. And there's really no other way we would have foreseen that. And as you know, every other district in Oregon is going through an identical issue right now. Because there's no way to have a crystal ball to know what the full impact is going to be until everything, the dust settles and your system has had time to run through payroll cycles. And then we have an idea of what the effect is going to be. But the effect is compounding also when we have unknowns, okay? And so that was really just a timing issue. We settled the contract that spring. And then once, and one of the benefits that came out of that, obviously, is that we focused on the upper part of the teacher's salary schedule, which I think was a, was a really good thing to do. In fact, Sheldon Lazar can be credited with the idea of bringing that in where we had a jumping off point. So we focused on the upper end of the salary schedule. This is hiring data from this past year alone. It's the first time for Silver Falls where we had 32 staff that were hired, almost all of them with multiple years of experience. That's never happened here before. And so that's a really, really good sign. And also I would call a silver lining to some of the challenges we have to reconcile our budgets. So that's a really good thing. One of the things we found though is once all the dust settled, and remember, we had two collective bargaining agreements to settle. That's really important to know also. And now that we're into February, we have a really good idea of what those costs are. And you're going to see here that we do have a negative of $825,000. Now, I'm going to say this again. There is no way we would have been able to calculate out what the impact of the personnel cost would be. The other thing is, and I will reiterate this again, that if I had this information that I have right now, back then, before we settled, I would make the same decision, the exact same decision. Because we are a people-driven business, we will not sacrifice our staff for the numbers. If anything, we will sacrifice the numbers for our staff. And these were incredibly important investments to make in both employee groups. And I think we're already seeing the benefits. The other thing is, in our view as a leadership team, we see this challenge as very solvable. So we do have the inner workings right now or the framework of a plan that can get us back to 5% ending fund balance by June of next year. So 16 months. It's ambitious, but we feel really confident that we can get there without having to lay off and without having to cut instructional days off the calendar. Those are two really important guiding principles that we have. And so I have listed here, we had a couple of one-time costs also. That maybe that's one thing I may have changed. We may not have had some of the curriculum adoptions or finishing the preschool house. Those are smaller one-time investments, but had I known what I know now. But again, those are done and we don't have to worry about them anymore. They're investments. And so we have a preschool now. And so when you look at immediate actions, that's where, that's where your mind immediately goes. Okay, what are we doing about it now? Well, right now, there's, there's a cutting, spending cutoff that'll happen mid-March. And that is all discretionary accounts in our district will be, I don't know if frozen is the right word, but spending will be cut, they won't have access to that anymore. Principals know about this, they've known for quite a while, they're making adjustments. And so it starts there with how much are we spending right now? And then any vacancy that comes up, we're really stopping to take a look at what that position is and what the potential savings are. That is huge because in any school district, 80% of your money is wrapped up in wages and benefits. That's just a fact. And so when we do have vacancies that come open, we need to take a look at those savings. And so what I don't want is for folks to start the equivalent of thinking about faces attached to jobs because we're not focused on laying off. And that's really, really important. But at the same time, we have to really be diligent with our vacancies as well because that's where the savings will come from. We will be reducing overtime and additional hours. There will be some exceptions, but we're working with principals on that right now. Our individual meetings with principals start Friday. And a big portion of those meetings are on staffing and other things to make sure that we're maximizing our resources. One of the things that the board will need to take action on is this idea of a tax anticipation note. And Kim, I think there are 32 right now being used, are 32 districts who have used?
Used them in the past.
32 districts have used the tax anticipation note. Basically, that's a line of credit and a bridge to get us into next year. Because in June, we get hit with a triple whammy, three payrolls in June. So we need a bridge there. And so we will bring that back to the board for action and we'll describe to you all the details coming up in our board meeting in March. And again, going back to the guiding principles, avoiding layoffs, protecting instructional days, and then the focus on academic returns on investment, that's just our strategic plan. That's it right there. These are really important to have your support. Because if not, I would need to take this roadmap back and my team and I go through it and come up with, come up with something else. But this is, this is our best thinking. I think it's the right way to go for our school district. I think it keeps our investments with our staff, protects student instructional time. And we're able to get back to an ending fund balance of 5% by June of next year. The other thing is, you see this word requires. So 6%, that's 6% of our general fund that we must save, okay? So if that puts it in perspective for you, for next year, 6% is what we're talking about. And so that must occur to make good on our goal for a 5% ending fund balance. And so I want to talk, just for a minute, I forgot to touch on, the reductions that we're talking about in the savings. So for vacancies or other areas where we feel like we can save funding. The reductions or savings will be proportional across employee groups, the central office included, absolutely. And so I think what you'll find, once we get into this, when we're working together from now until the budget is adopted, that you'll see that, that they will be proportional savings in all areas of our district. This is another way of looking at our knowns and unknowns. So our knowns are that we understand and know what the compensation scales are for 2425. That's huge. That's no longer a variable, it's no longer unknown. The state school fund estimated at plus $2 million, being in the 51% of the second year. And the COLA and STEPS adjustment is going to be an increase of $1.8 million. And then we have an inflation estimate of $1.1 million. And that's cost increases due to SB 489, which is this new piece of legislation regarding unemployment. And we can talk to you more about that as we get down there. And you know, the utilities, of course, have gone up too. And so we built that in. And then the unknown variables, of course, will be the May 2024 bond outcome. That's important because as things come up in our schools, boilers go down, other significant costs, that's going to have to come from somewhere, right? And so I shared with you, I think it was at the last board meeting, what the costs or last board work session, what the costs are, just to the middle school over the next couple of years. And so that's important to realize there. And Senate Bill 489 is going as a whole different curve ball that we're trying to grapple with right now, as are everyone else in the state. And then we'll, we'll know the 2527, we won't know what the outcome of that will be for some time. So those are the unknowns there. I think the really positive thing is we know, we know what these variables are, they're now fixed. And we have a plan to get to June of 2025 with a 5% ending fund balance. All of that makes this next year the year that we need to do this. This is just another way of looking at it. So if you look at the estimated beginning fund balance at negative 825, you also see the two additions here, the $3 million. That's in non-recurring expenses and the state school fund and the 51%. And the COLA and STEPS adjustment to inflation. And so this is the 6%, 3.22 million. To give you an idea of what this looks like in other districts, Salem, 6% is $30 million. They're reducing $30 million this year. So they've already gone into layoff. Next year's an additional $40 million. So they're in a $72 million hole. So just to add, add just some perspective here, that other districts are, every other district is grappling with the same thing with escalating costs. The immediate actions, of course, savings through vacancies. The discretionary funding will be cut off, I think it's one month early, isn't it? One month or so roughly? And then budget meetings with individual administrators are starting this week. And that's department administrators and school principals. And then the tax anticipation note where April 8th, we'll need for the board to take action on that. If that's the direction the board feels they want to go, that's our recommendation, obviously, as is this roadmap. That kind of lays out for you our thinking and how we'd like to approach this budget season. You will have this, I'll send this out to all of you. And of course, I'm at your service to provide you with more clarification down the road. I would like to give my teammates a couple of minutes to, to maybe highlight some things that focus on the work that they're doing before we open it up for questions, if that's okay. So Dan, I'll start with you.
Yeah, so I'd like to focus on the savings through vacancies and kind of combine that with the administrator conversations that we'll be having. If Scott said, you know, a lot of school districts are dealing with this and we, we went and listened to a school district that found themselves in this situation just about a year or so ago and in a much more, much more difficult situation. And one of the recommendations they had was exactly this, is when you have vacancies come open, to do what you can not to fill those during that current budget. And the phrase that I cannot get out of my head that the budget director of that district said is, build yourself a ramp to avoid a cliff. And, and that's exactly what we're trying to do, is wherever we can to not fill a position or move one position to another, maybe a, maybe a position that is not working directly with students. So obviously, if we get a vacancy that, you know, first grade class, second grade class, moving somebody who's maybe not working directly with students into that classroom, wherever possible. But I also want staff to know that, you know, if that has happened in your building or has happened in your building, that that doesn't mean one of those positions is cut. That is just at this point in time trying to save a position or, you know, save dollars right now. And those conversations about what positions or maybe some trimming back, those are, those are the conversations having for next year with the administrators to figure out where we can, you know, where we can save within buildings. But that does not mean those positions are cut. Those are just places where opportunity came, you know, presented itself to us where we had to make a savings. Those are just places where opportunity came, you know, presented itself to us, where we had to make a savings.
So I'm here a lot presenting about grant funding. And grant funding can sometimes get really confusing when we're talking about the impact of the general fund. So I just want to clarify, our focus remains on the strategic plan and students learning and growing. And that strategic plan really shapes how we spend our grant funds. So SIA, high school success, early literacy, all of those funds are directed by the state to focus on our student focal groups and to follow our strategic plan. So now's the time that we're going out and taking stakeholder feedback, working closely with our principals and their school communities to really prioritize, what do we have in our plan right now for next year? What should we change in order to help move the work forward while also supporting the general fund? And so one of the pieces of chatter I hear a lot with teachers and in our communities is the funds we're spending on consultants, specifically our educational excellence group that's really supported us in our guaranteed and viable work. This year, we're spending two hundred thousand dollars out of the SIA budget on this work. And next year, that contract will reduce by half, so to a hundred thousand dollars, a hun- hundred?
You got it.
Okay, thank you. Because that contract is designed to increase our own internal capacity. So as teachers and our principals and all of our education rises, we reduce our outside consultants. So I just wanted to address that right away because we knew that that question comes up.
So I just wanted to add that this is a very robust plan. And let me rephrase that, actually, this is a robust roadmap. And what we are here tonight to talk about are these guiding principles of how we would like to proceed down this roadmap. And with the board's approval on that, then our administrators and our teams will begin to work together to develop the plan. We all right now have the question, what does this look like? We don't have the answer of what this looks like, but we do know what it does not look like. We know that this does not look like closing a school. We know this does not look like completely eliminating programs. We know that this plan does not look like layoffs. And this plan does not look like impacting our students' instructional days. We need to preserve our staff, our students, and our schools. So to do that, there will be some difficult conversations. Things will look different, but different doesn't mean worse. And in fact, we may find a lot of efficiencies that are right under our noses. So I just wanted to be clear that, again, you know, this roadmap starts with the board's, you know, approval of these guiding principles, the board's support that we do want to regain that five percent ending fund balance. Facility issues, if, you know, something emergency comes up, we have an issue if we don't have a significant reserves. I just wanted to revisit again, you know, our state school fund is not keeping pace. We are talking about general funds, the funds from the state based on student enrollment. And we've talked about how student enrollment has impacted funding calculations and predictions. At this time, in any other fiscal year, we would have known for certain what the remainder of this year's revenue looks like. We don't know that today. We make projections, we make estimates. But the state has a bucket. And that bucket gets divvied out based on the enrollment statewide. So if somebody's projections are off, specifically possibly one of, you know, our Big Ten districts, let's say they underestimated their enrollment return and all of a sudden, they have more kids, their share of the bucket, if you will, or the pie becomes much larger, which means the rest of us have a little bite taken out. So those are the things that we are constantly adjusting for, trying to use crystal balls, trying to predict what's going on in districts around the state. We spend a lot of time talking with our peers. We are not alone, which doesn't make this any easier to deliver, not at all. But we have, we developed a budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, as well as drafted the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four before we knew what our wage costs were for two years for one association, one year for another association. The investments have paid off. We see that with the veteran teachers that are choosing to come to Silver Falls. The investments have paid off. Our classified staff turnover is lower than we have seen in years. So we are where we need to be, that investment was needed. We now need to right-size ourselves, though, for our needs. And we're going to need to look at things from a different lens and make this remain an adult issue. Our students should not feel this impact. This needs to be something that we solve by looking at what is the academic return on investment? Because just throwing more people at something does not solve it. We need to look at it a little deeper and a little with a new lens, so.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open it up, Jennifer, for questions?
Question, I just wanted to piggyback first on Leslie's mention of the Ed Excellence. That money comes out of SIA, which is different than the general fund, which is what Kim is talking about. So I think that, I just wanted to reiterate that because I think that's an important point to make. Anybody have questions? Go ahead.
Maybe this one probably is directed towards Kim, the finance guru. So Scott mentioned about the tax anticipation note and kind of saying it's like a line of credit. Could you dive into that maybe a little bit more? And is that, would that be something that we could use to, as Scott said, bridge it till we get funding from the state school fund in the next, you know, the second year of the biennium? Is that something that would be like a short-term, couple of months bridge that we pay off in a short term and not have to pay too much interest on? If you could elaborate on that, that'd be great.
Absolutely, that is an excellent question. A tax anticipation note is something that is used frequently by districts. We reached out and got an estimate from our municipal advisors. And they said, you know, anywhere between five and, you know, possibly more, possibly less per year, districts do obtain a tax anticipation note. Obviously, the fiscal status of, you know, whether, where you are in a biennium, how the, excuse me, how the economy is holding up, that will fluctuate, right? But what a tax anticipation note is, is exactly a bridge. It is an advance of funds in anticipation of the property taxes you will receive in November. It is extremely short-term. It is part of a pool, all the school districts that need this bridge funding, put the funds together. They are sold in a sense as an investment tool that people will invest in. And it's exactly as its name, you know, implies, that advanced funding of tax receipts. This specific tax anticipation note would, with board approval and resolution, would fund June fourth of twenty-twenty-four and would mature sometime between December thirty-one of twenty-twenty-four and May thirty-one of twenty-twenty-five. The design of the note itself is very dependent upon the districts that end up within that pool. I will tell you that this is one unique tool that some districts, and this is not a guarantee by any means, but when earnings are high in accounts, as they are right now, some districts see a net zero interest cost to that. Because while those funds come in, they do get placed in a high-yield investment account, whether that is, we have two different avenues we use. We use the Oregon State Treasury, as well as we have a money market that both right now, it's definitely the time to have money in the bank. And was looking into that. We cannot promise, but in times where the market is paying well, a lot of districts are reporting a net zero cost on that. So we are, again, cannot foretell what that could look like, but much lower interest rate than going to get some sort of traditional line of credit. So yeah, we are in the process of completing our cash flow projection. That is step one, that's being sent to Piper Sandler. And they will size the tax anticipation note in consultation with our bond council, which is Hawkins, Dellafield, Woods, and determine the length of that borrowing period based on the district. So March first is the deadline for every district to at least submit their information of what they could potentially be needing. And then it would be our March board meeting. We'd be bringing you details on the structure and the design of that TAN. And then April eighth, board meeting would be when a resolution would need to be adopted to ensure funds were available June fourth. And again, that there's just this very short window of time in which our expenses are going to exceed our resources. And this is a way that we can resolve that, ensure that there is no negative impact on any of our staff, any of our vendors, any of our operations, get it fully paid back, and end with a two point five million dollar, five percent ending fund balance. But again, this roadmap would need complete, you know, buy-in, yes.
So am I hearing correctly then? I mean, normally, the ending fund balance is to cover from the end of the fiscal year until taxes are coming in.
Correct.
Generally to practice. And so your ending fund balance generally covers that time as by design. But what I'm hearing is, we don't even have that luxury. We're in a situation where our budget, current one right now, we don't, we don't make expenses for this fiscal year in it without that loan.
To be absolutely clear, we do not have the cash flow to make three, to complete June expenses, correct?
And then, if I'm understanding all right, the only caution or drawback is potential interest cost after the fact?
Absolutely, there is no guarantee on what that net cost could be. Yes, that will be part of a proposed calculation. Of course, no one is ever going to promise something. It, I should actually back that up. The information we do receive from council should have that information because my understanding is that the pool would go with a fixed rate. So the only variable would be what would the earnings potentially be? Obviously, as you know, earnings on any account are fully dependent upon our economy. So projections are, I would love to see this happen and be fully off the books as quickly as possible, unless there was a situation in which we could benefit. And that is definitely historically happened for districts. Some districts take out a TAN when earning rates are very high and they can exceed the borrowing rate, and they literally use it as an income stream. This is not uncommon with, there's other forms called bond anticipation notes where you fully anticipate selling bonds in the future, but maybe it's not a good time to sell that bond. So you actually borrow today to wait to buy a bond, hopefully at a better rate. There's grant anticipation notes. So these are municipal programs through the state that are available for government entities.
But we'll know the interest rate we're paying before we take action, correct?
I need to validate that, but everything I am reading is that it would be a fixed rate prior to issuance. I will validate that, we definitely will have council. We definitely would need to know one hundred percent what we are getting into before we actually adopt anything, for sure.
What's the amount we're anticipating, is it eight twenty-five or a bit more than that?
So the ending fund balance that we're projecting right now is that we are, in essence, short eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to cover our costs through June thirtieth. As far as the amount of a tax anticipation note, that is designed by council and municipal advisors. So that I don't, I don't have enough information on that at this time. And honestly, I would defer to the actuaries and the people who definitely have municipal securities expertise far beyond our level. So we will absolutely have more information, this is very fresh, yes.
Scott, you've touched on several of the reasons, basically, of how we got here. One thing I was wondering, have, I assume a good look has been taken at all aspects of that as far as avoidance of future? One thing comes to mind, you know, I heard the other night about overestimating of revenue, which I personally, I struggled with, you know. Why would, ever, when you're doing a budget, would you overestimate on revenue? I couldn't balance that in my head. And maybe there's logic behind it. But those kind of things are, because that definitely plays a part. Revenues are overestimated, then you budget up according to it, and then they don't materialize. And, well, we don't know enough economics to know what happens after that.
Well, I can tell you that we were working on the numbers for what we just presented to you all the way up until Sunday evening. And so Kim and I were texting back and forth. I was at the district office yesterday, and she was, she was working on determining, you know, running her numbers again to make sure that they're correct. And so we've poured just about all we can into making sure that we understand this issue, but also to know that this is a heck of a challenge for districts when you have rising and escalation of personnel costs and you can't, there's no way to tell what those costs are going to be until your contracts are negotiated.
Yeah. But I was talking about some aspects that we could have control over.
Yes, to answer your question.
Thank you. I guess, what, what if we chose not to approve the TAN? And that's going to lead, you know, I'm inclined to, but what are the, you know, I like the plan of action, but, you know, I'm going to be, I think we all need to be watching this like a hawk for the next six months. And, you know, if around November, December, the dials aren't moving the way they, we think they're going to, what are we going to do with the remainder of the year, kind of a thing? So anyway, they'll go ahead.
Yeah, and I think you've probably been reading in the news what most districts are doing right now.
Yeah, layoffs.
And that is they're going into layoffs right now, for this year. And that's not even to get into next year. And so that really is the answer because eighty percent of our operating budget is in staffing. And so I feel that if we don't take every opportunity to avoid that, then in my opinion, as a professional, we are being lazy with our strategy. Because I don't think anything good comes from hacking off instructional days off the calendar when we already have the shortest school year in the country. And also, you don't recover quickly after layoffs. And I lived through the great layoff as a principal in twelve thirteen. I lost twenty-nine teachers in my school alone. And that takes years to come back from. Not only that, but the indirect costs that come along with that as well. So that's why our recommendation strongly is that we be really upfront about protecting jobs.
Yeah. I guess I'm hoping that, you know, there's been lots of initiatives with unit mapping and all the many things that have been new to this district the past couple of years. And most of that work has been done.
Yes.
And now just everybody hunker down and operate.
Yes.
And instead of, hopefully, you guys all focusing on training and this or all this, just helping to, helping to operate.
Yes, we are going into, and I'll talk about this in a little bit.
Okay.
We are going into our fifth year of our implementation of a guaranteed viable curriculum. And this is where the work starts. All of the work in unit mapping and common assessments and assessment cadres, that work's been done.
Yeah.
And so, and I don't foresee any major initiatives coming forward that our staff have to take on. It's more about refining the work that has been done by our teacher team.
Got a couple of thoughts I'll share. First of all, I appreciate the roadmap, and I think the urgency that you all like put into dealing with it right now because I think we all sensed that in kind of the last meeting, we were basically saying, hey, We were basically saying, hey, we need to come up with some solutions or an ideas right now. Um, I like the prioritization of trying to avoid layoffs, um, protecting our teaching days. And I did have a couple of follow-up questions. You probably don't have the specific answers, but one of the things I think was on there was reduction overtime. My assumption is that you'll look at the historical overtime and be able to come up with a rough calculation based off the new, um, contracts. We should have an idea of cost savings there. And again, probably not having that right now, but that'd be one thing that I would expect to, uh, get looked at. And then, um, Dan, I appreciate you talking about the positions being, if there is a vacancy that it's not getting cut, um, I think that's important for, hopefully that to get message that this is just a pause, as a, as a stopgap, that we do value these positions, that as the budget starts to self-correct, we'll come back around and, and look at that.
Yeah, absolutely. We want to have these conversations with our principals so they can take them back to their teaching teams in their schools to talk about, you know, how, you know, when we look at enrollment across the district and in particular buildings is how, you know, how, where are there places where if an opening came up that we might not fill a position, or how do we do that collectively as a team versus, you know, these happenstance ones that have happened this year, and then that school just be, feels unlucky or whatnot in those, those positions? Those schools need to have those conversations about those positions within their schools. Um, so to reiterate those, those does not mean that those positions are cut.
And I would, I would assume that, uh, you know, uh, showed up in the audit there, you know, we got like a million and a half in subscriptions and leases. I assume things like that are being, taken a hard look at too, that don't directly affect.
Yeah, and that goes with.
Personnel.
Sorry, uh, yes, um, that goes with, with Tom's comment on what's the solution if we don't do a tax anticipation note? Well, again, we could go through and we could bring you back a plan to lay off or cut instructional days, but then we're stuck with the same inefficiencies that we had before we even did that. So, at least protecting our staff in terms of their jobs and not cutting instructional days allows us to now scrutinize where we can make up our efficiencies and savings. So, hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I think one little thing, if I could add to the, to the subscription pieces, is one of the things that we do want to bring, I think many of those are within our IT department, several.
M, T and L, I mean, it's, it is a combination, yes.
That some of those within the IT department do come as part of insurance requirements, and there are certain things there. We do want our IT department to come before you and talk about what's, some of those things are. Um, some of them are, uh, unavoidable because of insurance requirements. The, the increase, especially in the IT department for, uh, certain things is, um, is surprising.
Cyber security.
Oh, I, I would never say that.
Yeah.
All of them could go or anything like that at all.
No, no, and I know you weren't saying that, but I think it's a good chance to look at them all.
I recognize quite a few of them, and there's a certain amount of them that I would question in budget crunch times. Maybe might not need to be there.
Absolutely.
Especially on a district-wide license aspect.
And that's exactly.
Which are quite expensive.
Absolutely. That's exactly what I think our, our message is, that things could look different, but that doesn't mean worse. Can we streamline instead of having, you know, a, a couple of different typing, you know, options or something? How can we streamline and, and be as efficient as possible? And, you know, the goal has always been there, but now it is, it is in our, you know, in our face, and it, it requires a, a new lens, and that's what our team's committing to is.
One thing I wondered about on the reduction of overtime and additional hours, what, obviously, if those hours now are being spent on something that's felt worthwhile, or they wouldn't be being spent. So, what I guess is being sacrificed, I guess, is what I would, would be wondering.
Well, and that would be conversations that we'll have with individual department heads and principals. And, and they would be able to best tell us, you know, how that's being used. We can't just make a blanket statement that we're cutting all ex- additional hours. That won't work. We really have to rely on principals to tell us.
But it does require, I, I will be perfectly transparent here, and we have the data on that. It does require a cleaner look between now and June. We estimate, and this is included in the $825,000 proposed deficit. Based on last year's numbers, we anticipate another $110,000 in work above and beyond somebody's contractual position. So, that is not including contractual required costs such as personal leave payouts or longevity awards. That is, you know, um, programs that we're, we're, are asking people to possibly do above and beyond their primary role. Could we look at those? Could we pause those and continue it, operations for the rest of this school year and reevaluate those? Um, so again, those, when we talk immediate actions, my goal, I, I'll put it right out there. My goal is for that number not to be 825, for it to be less than that. But, you know what? We have to take action, um, to get there, so.
Well, I just wanna, uh, let Josh, well, I'll let Josh go and then I'll speak.
Well, I'll start with some comments. I'm, I'm really frustrated with our state and the position we've been in, and then, um, I've just been doing the math. It's just the number that they increase percentage-wise year on year does not come even close to what the actual numbers are that it takes to run a school district. COVID gave us some money, like to push some stuff off. This was bigger problems than other districts than ours. And then, we lost enrollment, and now we're getting some of it back. That was a hit of COVID. And then, the outside of COVID, you have massive inflationary increases. And if you're a teacher going to the grocery store, it's not the seven, eight percent that the government says. It's much higher. We got to $5 a gallon in gas, and milk, five bucks depending where you go, and cheese, I'm like. So, the numbers that the teachers were asking for, I completely understand, and I don't blame them for asking for it. I'm really upset at the government for like putting every district in the state, this is a statewide problem, into this situation. I'm feeling sick to my stomach. I feel like I'm going to my dad and asking him like, hey dad, um, I overspent, kinda borrowed some money. And it's stressful. I'm questioning us as a board, like, what's our responsibility? We're saying 5%, but our policy says 10. Do we need to change our board policy? And how did we miss so much? Like, I, I got a bunch of questions, like how we got here. I hold the state responsible, then probably hold us a little bit too. Um, I'm worried about teachers, and this is gonna be this question to you. If we have like four vacancies in a, this is, I'm not getting the name of the school because I don't want to stress anybody out. Say we have four pre- teachers that lose, we say we're not filling that. That's a lot of extra burden for the existing staff. So, I'm gonna assume we might have to shuffle some people. And if I'm giving you worst-case scenario, like, hope to God, we don't have four vacancies that happen. But I'm also worried about teacher burnout, staff burnout, DO burnout, with all the extra stuff going on with student behavior in the classrooms, parents disengaging from being with their kids and helping teachers. So, I'm really worried about them and the uncertainty, so.
Yeah, I think a couple of things. We, we did our transfer request policy, uh, transfer request process a little bit earlier this year. And so, I have meetings this weekend, next week with people that put in transfer requests. So, looking for kind of where can some win-wins happen is definitely the first line, uh, of attack. So, when we see those openings, you know, have, so I, and I meet with those people individually, one-on-one, to dive deeper into kind of what they might be asking for, say, well, might not be able to do this one, but what if something like this came up over here? So, I have a good sense of who's interested in possibly moving. So, those are one-on-one meetings happening this week and next week. Um, we, this Friday is when people that are on any kind of leave of absence, whether that's a full leave of absence or partial, they have to indicate their intent to return next year. So, there's, we're looking for as many win-wins on those types of situations to not only avoid l- layoffs and, and those things, obviously, but even involuntary transfers. We would, you know, those are stressful for people. So, we're looking for as many, uh, ways to piece those together, Josh, that doesn't cause more stress.
Another thing that I wanna go through is like, I'm nervous about losing enrollment. So, like, like we said, keeping kids and people, I don't wanna be distracted by this. And Scott, I really appreciate you saying, we're gonna, we're not trying to lay off because we're gonna try to keep everybody. So, I'm in favor of the TAN at this point, especially if the interest rates, I was looking at them over here earlier, are extremely low. It's kind of like a no-brainer to bid, bridge the gap. These, these people are family members, and I don't wanna let anybody go, so we can avoid that. I'm really curious what you're gonna pop up with, like what you're recommending of doing? Because I don't know how we're gonna, there was a good-sized number there that I know we still gotta come up with, uh, going forward. So, I'm curious what that looks like. Um, I do have a question about the SAI funds you mentioned, Leslie. So, future expenses, so, or, does any of the ed X money come from the general fund, or has it always been SIA funds?
It's always been SIA.
Okay, so that doesn't affect our general fund. But, so this is something new to me regarding, we're talking about just the general fund balance. The SIA funds, government funds they give us that's separate from basically the student enrollment and stuff.
And they have sp- very specific things that they can be spent on.
Okay.
And it's use it or lose it.
Yeah, correct.
One for you, Scott. Sorry to point, that was aggressive. Because I'm curious about this. So, I, for, to my knowledge, the way we get paid is by the previous year's enrollment, correct? Where they run those numbers and they pay us the next year, right?
Two-year average, the higher.
The greater of two years.
So, the 2018, 2019 year, and then we dropped 2.6 million in 2019 to 2020. And that was before COVID. I was like, why did we have a $2.6 million drop in revenue before COVID?
Well, remember that we were just finishing negotiations at that time as well.
He's talking about revenue though.
Just on the revenue.
Yeah. Or what, maybe, I guess it wouldn't be rev, but the general fund balance, that's what it was, all right? The annual general fund balance, why there was such a drop? Because we weren't, the teacher's contract just got done two years ago.
It was the one before that.
It was like February 2020.
We were seeing, um, declining enrollment at Robert Frost during that time period. We were anticipating that our class sizes would, and classrooms would decrease. And Mark Twain only had a smaller capacity than Eugene Field, and that's when all of the, those two schools were changing and closing and the great configurations. And so, uh, we, Steve and I were planning on smaller, um, students at that time.
And then I got, my one last one for me, and then I'm done. I got my list. I wrote them down.
Right ahead, John.
Um, is there a line item in the budget for board activities at all? I don't want to take a dollar, period, for anything we do. Like, I don't know what it comes from, like, with board trainings or what, like, we'll figure it out.
We can bring it up to you at the next board meeting.
Okay. I know that's my opinion, but if we're asking for cuts, I think we should take it too. So, if we can. I don't know how it all works. All right, thanks for entertaining me. I'm done.
We had to do DIY board training.
Jangyutti, baby.
Um, I just wanted to say that I, I really appreciate the, the way, the format that you have presented, um, this to us tonight. Um, I am, I'm getting what Scott's saying about like, let's do this first to make sure that we don't have to, or not to make sure, but to, um, try to avoid cuts in the next fiscal year. Um, that would include, um, personnel. So, I, I guess I'm, at this point in time, unless there's a compelling argument, I would, um, lean towards the, um, what's the instrument called? TAN? That's what we're calling it.
Well, and, and that, yes, there will be a great deal of additional, uh, detailed information coming to you with the TAN. Uh, what we're looking for, I think, most importantly tonight, is these guiding principles of, of absolutely, looking for your support that, that, uh, we would like to take care of our people and get through this school year without furloughs, but it will mean a negative ending fund balance. I, we could save that eight, that negative number. If, the impact on our staff would be horrendous, and that, that we don't, we are looking for your guidance on, on that, that we can take our guiding, guiding principles, avoiding layoffs, avoiding lost instructional days, and achieving a 5% ending fund balance. We would like to be able to proceed on this roadmap to development of a plan with our leaders and looking for the board's input on, on that approach.
I guess I'm comfortable with that balance at this point unless there's compelling arguments, um, that I haven't heard yet.
It seems like a prudent approach to me, rather than, you know, taking out the, the hacksaw and start chopping people or instructional days. Um, it's, it's obviously concerning to me at this point, but it, you know, we're not at a crisis point. We have options. The TAN seems like a real reasonable, inexpensive way to help our, our cash flow match our, well, say, our cash flow match our expenditures, uh, get through that time period. So, you know, I, I guess I'm in support of the roadmap you've laid out.
Yeah, me too. I mean, I, I said it before, but you know, yeah, me too. But I guess I would, um, running the school district and hearing the things the past few years resembles me trying to run my farm and my fab shop the past few years. You just, you just don't know what's coming. It's just, you order parts, they don't show up, the price went up 30%, no one told you. You just, you just, you just have to charge forward and, and do your job. But, but I, but as this year is, as I put last year in my rearview mirror, and I'm looking forward to the, the future, I'm like, okay, here we are, I've made some adjustments, have had to redo some of my finances. And, um, you know, there's, there's no excuses. Now, you can't just say, ah, the dang government or the doggone, you know? This is the way it is, and this is how we have to operate. And so, we have to watch, I gotta watch my numbers on my farm and my, my shop like a hawk and make sure things start moving back in the right direction, and that's what we have to do this next, this next year. And if it doesn't, well, we need to revisit this, but, but.
I had a clarifying question for you, Scott. I think, I think you cleared it for me, or if I wanna double-check. So, when you said district-wide, we're not just meeting schools, we're meeting all levels of department, right? So, DO.
Yes, that is correct.
I, I'm really glad that you brought that up about the board.
Uh, it's just something that just, I just feel like sick, like I, what can I do to, I wish I had money, you know? So, if this is something we could do, other than advocate, you know, so, yeah.
Sorry, just to be clear, if, if we didn't go with this, the other alternative would be we'd be looking immediately at furlough days or layoffs or some combination. So, that, this plan, this roadmap is a map to avoid that.
Yes.
Keep kids in school.
This is our recommendation, and with the guiding principles, I just need to be sure that I have your support as a board.
I'll make another point. When you lose a teacher, you're not just affecting the teacher. Those kids lose their teacher, like, it's a huge effect on a child.
It's very hard to come back from any sort of layoff. I wholeheartedly discourage it. Thank you. Can I see just a thumbs up from the board?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of moving forward at this point.
Do we need to, as an action item later?
Yep.
No, I'll come back to you, uh, with additional details, and thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Kim. Welcome to the fire.
Welcome aboard, Kim.
Daniel, uh, a second to pull up, uh, my other presentation.
All right, so we'll switch gears a little bit. Tonight, I wanna go over with you, uh, a lot of the things that I've been working on. Not just this past year, but every year that I've been in this school district, one year builds upon the nest. And that's the thing. And one of the things I've told the board, uh, when they hired me, I said, if you just want me to manage the store and keep everything going, I'm not your guy. But if you want somebody to come in and take a look at what we're doing and improve upon that, then, then that's something that for me was extremely attractive. And I think we've done some incredible work. And when I say me, what I really mean is, is our teachers and support staff and my teammates. And so, in order to frame this part of the agenda, there's my goals right here. These are what I set, uh, for, uh, the district. These are my goals for the district, having to do with the vision, uh, of the district. And then we have these standards here, uh, that COSA and, uh, OSBA put out. And so, each year it gets really complicated to try to. And so each year it gets really complicated to try to connect the two. So I, I, I've gone through and I've done my best to try and connect them all for you. But one of the things that's great about having an extended timeline is that you'll have all this information going forward and then I'm at your service to clarify anything you might need. I work very closely with all of you, so none of this will be a surprise. But I think there are some, some things that are really neat to highlight as well. And so as you know, we don't do anything in this district system wide that is not based on empirical evidence. Evidence based best practice. You will not see that in this school district in terms of the types of change that we're making to uh bring a guaranteed and viable curriculum to all kids. And this empirical research is done by, most of which by John Haddie, who, who's book Visual Learning is the undisputed uh bible of research that a new edition just came out. So I'm gonna start off with visionary district leadership. So I was really fortunate when I first got to Silver Falls that the uh strategic plan was already done. It hadn't been implemented yet. That's the thing, it was supposed to start the year before the pandemic. Um, uh but the, the year actually that the pandemic struck, that was in the spring and everything kinda went sideways. So I was able to come in in two thousand twenty and start from year one, which was great. It just worked out perfectly. And the three goals of the strategic plan were also perfect, cause I believe in groups of three. You can't have more than three, otherwise it's too many. And the first two are like one A and one B. You cannot have social emotional learning without all the other academic stuff that goes with it. You cannot have academic teaching and learning without also taking into account a child's social and emotional uh skillset as well. And so uh what we've managed to do here in year four of our implementation of a guaranteed and viable curriculum is to get to a point now where all of the hard work has been done. And I'll share with you some of the evidence there. But we are on the cusp of now starting to see the progress that our kids will make now that teachers have common assessments and are reading the PLCs to talk about kids. And to answer the question, did the kids actually learn what I intended to teach or we intended to teach? And I'll talk about this tonight in greater detail. But what we're about in a continuous improvement plan, which is what you see on this standard here, what we're after is to replicate the strategies that work. And we do not know if instructional strategies work unless we have common assessment. And so we're right at that place now. So in other words, we never wanna be here where we have low results and we have no idea why they're low. Or even worse, in my opinion, we have really high results, but have absolutely no idea what we can tie that to. So we don't wanna be here. Where we wanna be is over here in leading and learning so that we understand the antecedents for success, what has worked and what has not. We're keeping what has worked and we're getting rid of or discontinuing strategies where we're not seeing any gains in student learning. And this is all part of Doug Reeves' work. This has been a huge focus of my work for the past fifteen years. Um, and so we get into the first goal uh and the theory of action. I don't need to read it to you. What it has to do is refining the mapping parts of our curriculum. That's what that has to do with. And when we talk about inclusive uh district culture and culturally responsive pedagogy, that's what this is. A guaranteed viable curriculum is to ensure that every single child has universal access to grade level standards and that we have made a promise to our community that those standards will be taught in a viable instructional manner. And, and you've seen those documents probably on our website that are, that are public viewing. Every, any community member can see what it is that their child uh should be learning. And, and if not, that's a discussion point that, that a parent can have with, with uh school principals. And so that's uh the gist of guaranteed and viable curriculum. When we start talking about student education, heck, we're talking about raising the bar for all kids. So even though our kids are, even for our kids who are performing on a great level, raising the bar for them as well. And so after this year is done, we will be pretty much complete with unit mapping. Um, elementary's almost done. Remember, this is February and the school year's June, so we still have a, a good chunk of the school year left. Um, now typically, and this is in my experience, cause I've been through this whole process multiple times. It takes longer in middle school and high school because we map subject areas. So that's a different animal there, but we're making really good progress there too. So consistent implementation of projection maps, it's there. We're in buildings every single week uh with the principals, just principal taking us on a tour of, of the good work that teachers are doing. And that evidence is really clear. So we do know that our teacher teams are focusing on the standards that they mapped together as a teacher team and that each team is roughly within two weeks of each other. So there's so, there's a little bit of give and take. We're not telling teachers they all have to teach the same way. They just have to teach the same thing, which is our standards. Yes, Josh?
Those uh green marks?
Yeah, uh, these are just. Yeah, just checked off. I couldn't find a check mark. So I just, I used the next best thing. Um, and so what we're seeing now is the implementation of data team cycles. And that's at the tail end of our five year plan for guaranteed and viable. So that all of our teachers now, every single one of our teachers has been trained through the thirty hour assessment cadre. And all of our teacher teams are working on common assessments. Now the step for this next year is, are we coming together after we've assessed the unit and talking about how our kids did with a common assessment, having a single language to talk about? And then what are we doing for the kids who didn't get it? And what are we doing for the kids who need an even bigger boost or are already high flying? And so that's really the gist of here. If I took you on a tour of PLCs, uh we would see focused agendas. We would see early release that uh, that we implemented three years ago, uh which builds in time for teachers, it's not enough time, I can be honest. But we would see the evidence of these things showing up. Our walkthroughs, uh usually I go with Leslie, but a lot of times Leslie and Dan. Our walkthroughs are with the principal. And so uh principals at a school to work with teachers and professionally develop their teachers and all of that. Our role really in the walkthroughs is to make sure that our schools are being resourced the way they, the way they should be. Um, and to, for the principal to show us the evidence of this work happening in your school. Um, and so I think it's a really exciting time going into year five now where we're focused on the data team. That is huge. And it's with common assessments that are standard today, so district has never had that system wide. We may have had co- uh similar assessments like STAR or assessments like that, but those weren't written as standards and they weren't written by our teachers. And so that puts us in a really great spot in terms of guaranteed and viable curriculum. Here's some data that's pretty exciting. This is kin- grade K literacy. This is all kids, they break them out into different groups, cause some of the target kids, you know, there's some different variables there. But if you see, this is just three months. Three months of implementation and you can see the growth that kids are already making. And basically what you wanna see as time goes on, more green, less gray. It's really that simple. And Josh, you know, today we were talking about the report that you got about your kindergarten student.
Yeah, so.
And how well they were doing.
Yeah, I get, I don't know, I've, I got a kindergartner and he got like a report, like a, you know, like a, almost like a report card, but it was an individual sheet about like their reading and linguistic skills. And it showed where he started. My fault, he wasn't doing too great. Like how many words he knew, how fast he can read, all those things. Literally gave me a percentage of how much increase he had. It was a lot, I, I've, I've seen it in the house, it's been pretty impressive.
I was so glad to hear that too, Josh, that you're seeing where the rubber meets the road there. Um, and this is just after three months. I'll come back to you at the end of the year and really show you the growth that we've made um the next time we assess at the end of the year. This is fourth grade. And fourth grade, we're, I chose fourth grade, cause that's the cohort that really got impacted through COVID. They didn't really have a kindergarten year. Um, so that's really important to, to make sure we're paying close attention to that. And we're seeing good growth there as well. These uh, well, anyway, grade four, this is grade three. This is taken from another report, but this shows us all the way up to the current date here and then targets going out. Um, we're pr- we're confident that we will meet these targets. The most important thing is, this is the first year we're seeing an uptick in achievement here. And that, the most important thing, the target group here of our most affected kids, their aim line is steeper. That is so critical. If their aim line is not steeper than, than this here for all students, then we just have a perpetuating achievement gap forever. And so this is really positive also. This is four year graduation. Uh, we're back up to pre-pandemic levels, ninety-two percent graduation rate this past year. The highest this district has had is ninety-two percent pre-COVID. So that's encouraging as well. Um, this is ninth grade on track there. And again, going back to looking at, how do we make sure we're on this side? So we understand that if we have dated as favorable or unfavorable, that we know why. That's the most important thing. The worst place to be, in my opinion, is the bummer corner where you're not doing well and you have absolutely no idea why you're not doing well. And that's really what the basis of the past four years has been about, building infrastructure for this to take off. And one of the things we know is that adult actions need to change before adult needs. So that's really what the work has been about the past four years. And we're going into next year, next year is our last year of working with educational excellence. After that, we will uh transition the responsibility and the capacity back to our staff. And we have a plan for that. And that's all going according to plan at this point. I'm really, really thankful, mostly to the staff that implement this on, uh every single day. Um, here's a visual representation of our five year plan. I shared this back in the summer of two thousand twenty. And we were deep into COVID, we had just started going through the COVID uh, COVID mess. And we knew that we were gonna have to come out of COVID with a plan. And now we're in a far different place than we were going into COVID. We actually know what it is that our kids uh are expected to learn. And we also know now with common assessments, uh we know whether or not they learned it. Um, and this is where we are now, of course. This is another way of looking at it. I love this chart. This top, this is Michael Fulham's work. Michael Fulham's, one of the uh preeminent education researchers and he, all of his work is around change. And so basically, there's this myth that when change is introduced, you immediately see results. Right, immediately. Well, we changed something, it's, it's supposed to work. If not, let's do something else. And that happens time and time again in education. And it's the reason why the achievement gap never gets closed. Because no one is patient and no one wants to do the hard work of actually building the foundation, which takes years worth of work. And so what we've managed to do is to understand that those expectations are a myth. That really where we can start seeing the actual performance is here. And that's after we've done this work here. Does that make sense? So here, the duration of recovery is here. That's all the hard work we're doing, that's done, just like you asked Tom. Now it's about building on that and refining what we do. When new teachers come to our district, they are handed the curriculum we're supposed to teach because our teacher teams have already done the work. And so this is the most important thing to realize, that now is really where we get to see our students uh and our teachers' good work. I'm really proud, proud that we're at this point. If you would've asked me back to July two thousand twenty, if we would be here uh going into our fifth year together, um, I'm really, really, really thrilled, really proud of our staff. We use these types of accountability methods to, to understand what is our level of systems implementation. And so right here, this is a monitoring form that we use. This happens to be from the middle school. I'll show you a couple other ones as well. Uh, but when units get finished, once units get finished and principals can give feedback back to their uh PLC teams, then they can be updated. And what we want is for the blue-ish colors to happen. And the blueish says, this map is detailed enough to expedite prep time for teachers new to the grade level. And that's sort of a way that we can tell, are we maximizing, are we maximizing our resources here? So if the maps are done, then all of that planning that went into building those units does not have to be recreated anymore, cause those units are done. And this being February, I fully expect that uh we will see uh all blue at the end of the year. We will be done with unit mapping. I cannot tell you how huge that is. You know, we talk, it's so difficult to hear, we're gonna invest in our future selves. Well, here we are, we're in the future and we do not have to redo that work. It's incredible.
Can I just make a comment on that blue part? Um, I was that person, the person new to the grade level this last year. And I was handed a map that didn't make any sense and it took me hours and hours and hours and hours and hours to figure out what I was supposed to be teaching. And um so I, I hope that the investment is, pays off for our staff that are new to a subject or to um a grade level because um we wanna keep good people and that's, that's part of it.
One of the things we're seeing, especially with more experienced staff coming to us, is their amazement when a team already has this work done. So what they do is they take the map and then make it their own. Right, but the standards have already been mapped to the unit and the assessment, which is huge. Leslie, you wanna comment on that at all or?
No, I, it's, it's so good to hear you talk about that Jennifer, because I think that's the experience that some of our newer teachers have shared as well. And um we're just really excited that this, we're seeing more and more of that blue color across the district.
This is um map completion for our K eights. And so these two grade levels um are, uh they, they have an additional challenge that they're working through, but these all will be blue by the end of the year. Orange means they're almost there. Um, and so we, our principals, our principals lead PLCs, not just their school. So we have a principal uh responsible for kindergarten at all of our K eights. It's a much better use of our resources to direct our focus, to having one instructional leader monitoring the work of a full grade level PLC across multiple schools. This is assessment, this is really encouraging. So uh the navy blue is the formatting is done, the, the assessment's done. Um, and what we're seeing is grade levels really starting to change blue. That is, that the PLC has created the assessment, the assessment has gone to our assessment auditors, who are our teachers. And that teacher team has audited the assessment to say, good to go, it meets the standard that we're looking for. And then they're rocking and rolling. And so this is K five here. Orange means that feedback, uh, the feedback that's been given uh just means that it needs to be updated and reflected in the assessment. Um, and this is high school, making progress. They're making progress, but remember that high school and middle school map each subject area. And so it's a lot more work. It's a different animal than it is, say, in elementary. But well on our way, well on our way. So that's really around the guaranteed and viable curriculum piece, and that is a core program for all kids. On top of that, when we start talking about goal number two, the social emotion health. On top of that, when we start talking about goal number two, the social emotion health and all of that, that's a system that we need to have to, uh, to address kids who aren't getting it. So the kids who are not on grade level or that are falling off of grade level, what is your plan for that? And the educational leaves the term of multi-tiered systems of support. And it just means understanding the profile of kid that we're teaching and aligning resources accordingly. So that they close the achievement gap. It's really as simple, as simple as that. And so we're really blessed to have synergy now. And this phase of synergy, I'm not sure it's fully operational yet. But we now have a central nexus to store all of our intervention data that saves over time. So when kids go from kindergarten all the way up to seniors and high school, and they're still below grade level, we can look back and figure out why. That's huge. So we're no longer having to shuffle through papers. And this is in the process of being developed. So kids in care teams will have individual plans, uh, loaded in here. And again, it saves time, it increases efficiency. Every school in our district has a care team. And care teams basically come together to talk about the bottom twenty percent of kids. We should always expect in any school that at least eighty percent of the kids are operating on a grade level. And then, so what's the next step for that, that twenty percent? What are we doing to bring those kids up as well? This is really encouraging. I texted the board this. This is just great. This is our most impacted school. And impacted, I mean, um, variables like poverty, certain language learners, those types of things. And so they have a big target group of kids that they're working on. This is grades, uh, three, four, and five. And this is reading intervention. This is reading intervention. So this is the first year that we've had every single one of our students in K one and two in, in explicit phonics instruction. In a specific program called Phonics for Reading. We never want kids getting up to third grade not knowing how to decode and read phonics. And this is one of our stopgaps in the system to make sure that we, we have that built in. And so just after three months, we're seeing the type of growth that, that, I mean, this has been the core of my work for twenty-five years. I have never seen growth like this before. That's really unusual. And it's really neat. And I think if you spent time with us walking the classrooms at March twenty, you would see just how talented that staff is. Because it would make a lot of sense. The capacity of staff is really extraordinary. And this is grade five. Again, we're seeing incredible growth, uh, from our fifth graders. There are a different program, um, designed for multi-syllabic words, um, called Rewards. And our teachers were part of a grant. So we got the training materials, the student materials, um, for free, basically. The grant or the RTI paid for it. So that came at no cost to the district, we just benefit from the capacity that's built. And again, going back to replicating what works and what doesn't. And so that's really our goal moving into year five, is that we will focus all of our energy on replicating instructional strategies that are effective. And then through the use of data, removing those instructional strategies which are being ineffective. That truly is the work of continuous improvement. But you cannot get there without doing all of that hard work of knowing what do you expect kids to learn and how would you know when you've learned it? And that's all with the mapping piece that we're now coming to the end of that road. Again, I, I had this, I think, I just put this in there just to, just to end that section. And the sense of belonging piece really goes back to what I just described. And, and for the most part, we've absolutely met that goal. Really proud of that work. Every single one of our, our elementary schools, um, has a PBIS framework implemented, that's a positive behavior framework. Uh, with a universal language that kids understand, behaviors taught explicitly to kids, what's expected with examples and non-examples. That's really, really huge. Almost every single one of our schools has playworks as well. And that's a way that we can structure things like recess time, where we have kids actually leading the games. And we have older kids as junior coaches. So it's really neat. All right. Now we get into the fun stuff, which is the fall. So I came to you a couple of months ago. And in this theory of action, I said, if the general obligation bond passes, then we can begin the process to ensure the long-term high levels of the fall. But if it doesn't, then we will regroup and assess our situation moving forward. We don't need to rehash all of our work. Because you're the board, uh, that was, uh, part of addressing this challenge. And so what we've managed to do is to take the previous bond in November for the middle school and high school and move that work forward. Is it perfect? No, it's not. And I think we had some really robust discussions, but is it the best version of a plan we can do without having to redo the process all over again? I feel confident we did. I really do. And so, so much work has gone into this. I would say, this has been, uh, this has monopolized more of my time than any other aspect of Silver Falls since the day I came here, July one, two thousand twenty. This has been a, a non-stop twenty-four, seven, uh, job to try to figure out a way through, um, our journey to reconciling our facilities. And, um, I think we have a runway right now, we'll just have to see how our bond does. Our pack is just getting started, um, and the information stage has started as well. So I need to be careful about that, if you see all that. But when I look at the goals that I set, um, these are some pretty heavy goals that we've met this year. So we've implemented, uh, the comprehensive bond communications plan. I mean, I don't need to tell the board just what that entailed. I mean, all the different listening sessions, uh, committee work and all of that. And yes, we didn't pass a bond in November, but we sure learned a heck of a lot. And I think we're better for it as a school district. I think we're better informed, our public is better informed. And right now, where we're at, of course, is, um, the May bond. And the board fully participated in that, like I know you are. And on standard six, um, effective organizational management, I just wanted to put down a few statistics about, um, staffing and hiring. All of our teachers since July, it's twenty twenty-one, Dan, is it? All teachers hired since twenty twenty-one have to go through our hiring process. And that hiring process is multi-staged. Teachers actually have to prove they're proficient teachers before they are hired. So, and that's teaching our kids. So if somebody wants to come and work in Silver Falls, they're going to have to work for it, they're going to have to prove it. And it's not sending us a video of them teaching their own classroom or another group of kids, coming in to teach our kids. And then our principals and their teams of teachers will decide, uh, who is the best teacher and who's the best fit for their staff. And that's really, really been important. We've had eighty-eight teachers hired since the fall of two thousand twenty-one. It went over before thirty-two were hired for this school year, most of which had many years of experience. And some of the highlights from, uh, from this school year, uh, seven teachers were hired at Robert Frost. That's an anomaly. And if you see the teachers that Jamie recruited and hired there, it's, it's pretty special. Ten teachers hired at Silverton High School. All K five and K eight students have a dedicated music teacher. Now, say what you want about music, but before I got here, that sure was a huge topic in the community. And we have addressed that issue for the most part. And we've hired some top-notch music teachers. And there's nothing better than going into somebody's music class and sitting in the back and seeing the kids, uh, really enjoying, uh, this subject area that we didn't provide before. Or if we provided it, let me put it this way, if we provided it, we did it because we had teachers who had an extra skill set to teach music. Or if they were in secondary, they had a music teacher. But, um, I'm really proud that I can report back that all of our kids do get music instruction. And that all K five and K eight students have a dedicated PE teacher, which was not the case. It was not the case, you know? We have some schools still without PE. That's also the instructional area that is the only one that has instructional minutes written into legislation. So it's really important as well. And then financial management. I can use the entire presentation that I just gave, um, outlines for you just how much I've been involved in the, in the financial strategy of this district as well. So I'll let that work speak for itself. And the other thing I'll say about board communication, um, I take a lot of pride in the fact that I'm able to give to you a report every single week. So all of the major things that happened in that week are in a report that I send to you every Friday. And that doesn't happen everywhere, but it's something I learned early on. When I came here, that we really need to make sure we have well-informed board members. And maybe even more importantly, that board members have opportunities to participate. So I want you as a board to know everything that I know. Because we're better together as a team. And I hope you feel the same way, you have opportunities to be involved, to participate meaningfully. And we're a new board, some of us, and so the sky's the limit for you and how much you want to be involved. What we try to do is, is to match your strengths and what interests you and the goals that you have while you're on the board. And hopefully help you achieve those goals as well. So having said that, that concludes, uh, my presentation. I would be happy to take questions.
Your question?
Uh, not a question, just, um, some general comments. I was glad to see the transition to phonics this year. I noticed a significant improvement in my own first grader. And so that was, uh, uh, significant to see. I also like the, the mapping. It's not unique to, um, just children, like we use it in the adult learning model. And so it makes a lot of sense. My other work for five years, being an instructor, like very specific mapping and expectation of the transfer of knowledge. And so without having that roadmap of where you're going to be when you're three, four, or five, and six, and then the actual assessment to see, is that transfer of knowledge actually happening? So, um, I like the, the theory behind that. So just a couple of general comments on the, on the goals very specific to those two.
Thank you, Derek.
I've got a question for you, Val Lee. The, it's like one of the measurements, it says culturally responsive instructional leadership improvement. I honestly don't know what that means, if you will, in a variety of ways.
So I guess it really matters what it means to you, so that I can understand.
So for this instructional leader, what that fancy term means is that you take every child as an individual child and understand what skills they come to you with. And there's all sorts of different ways and means by which you can gather information to understand the profile of that child. That is what culturally responsive teaching is in a nutshell. And that's been my mission as a superintendent ever since I got here, was to make sure that our core curriculum, we have universal access for all kids, receive a high level of core curriculum where they know the standards, they know what's expected, and that we assess using the same language. And then what happens for the kids who didn't get it? And what system do we have to make sure they do not fall between the cracks? No child in Silver Falls School District should ever make it to third grade without knowing how to read. And that is now a reality with the accountability systems we've put in place. By accountability, I just mean that we can assure that kids are receiving explicit instruction on existing. And we can say that, that we have built into the system infrastructure so that kids do not slip through the cracks. And I know I could teach a semester-long course on that, Josh, because that truly is where my passion is, but I hope that that describes.
You did, thank you very much. Thanks, Greg.
Good question, Josh.
Excellent question.
Anything else? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
It's an honor to serve you.
Thank you. All right, I think we're moving on to five, uh, discussion items. We've got our policy first reads. And it says, Dan is the presenter. Dan, do you have anything to say about our first read policies?
Yeah, so really, the, um, there's a slight change to policy GBM staff complaints. And there's a recommended deletion of its AR. And the, I think I've spoken before about the number of different complaint, uh, procedures that there are with, uh, some of them are state mandated, so we don't have a lot of choice there. Uh, recently encountered this, uh, complaint procedure. I found some of the language in it a little bit, uh, hard to follow, the timeline's unwieldy. And, um, I did a little research to see if OSBA had a, was this a sample policy from OSBA? OSBA did not have a sample AR. And if you go to the changes I've made in the actual policy, the sample policy for, from OSBA is, if you need a procedure, use KL. And, and so I did some researches in, well, I did, I researched four districts to see, are there districts that do have a, an AR, uh, procedure? And I couldn't find any of the four. So my recommendation is to use the OSBA sample policy, which then refers the procedure to KL, which I think is what people are familiar with, or at least our administrators are familiar with, and the timelines seem reasonable.
Any discussion about these recommended addition deletions?
Just one. I guess I was reading that's the only concern that I had is that we weren't changing policy in the middle of that complaint. So we were following the pre-existing.
Great question, Josh. I, we're going to leave these two as, until your adoption of, of them in three reads. So we could, we can live with these for the time being. So to answer your question, any current complaints will not get, um, you know, kind of lost in between. So I, I'm in no real hurry. By the time we get to the third read, I think we'll be good.
All right. Uh, let's move on then to the school year calendar. This was presented to us last meeting, and it was pretty straightforward calendar. Um, I didn't see any email feedback from the community. Have you gotten any feedback?
No.
All right, so discussion around the calendar?
I'm defaulting to the educators. I didn't hear anything.
Yeah, and, and just to reiterate the process, we, Kevin's not here anymore, but he usually heads us up and we get input from both associations, right?
Yeah, I took the lead this year on this one.
Oh, you did?
I did, yeah. Um, but we did have, uh, three meetings of the calendar committee, and I did brief this at each of the, we do monthly meetings with both associations. And I did, uh, review the status of, of this with both of them prior to, um, your adoption. So, uh, I don't think that there's any concerns from anybody, uh, to speak of. And, uh, we did get some of the clarification on the January sixth date. We did get all of the building-led PLC dates pretty much moved to the first Wednesday of the month. The committee did decide to only recommend two makeup dates. They did thoroughly talk to their members about, uh, adding one, but they really felt like that May date is important during a, the long stretch of the spring to have that date there and acknowledge that, um, should we have a more severe winter, that the, the option before the board would be to extend the school year. that the, the option before the board would be to extend the school year.
Thank you for the recap, Dan, and for the, everybody's contributions that went into that. All right, I'm assuming then that we are ready to take action. Oh, and I did want to just point out that that calendar is a kind of a funky look. And Debbie, in the past, I don't know how many years, has transferred it to a more clean look for parents. And we appreciate that very much.
So I'm assuming the, the calendar that we got with the presentation we just received from the budget, that those two are in agreeance with one another for, because we're not trimming any days. And we don't, as far as, I mean, I don't, I'm just, we're going to be working together with those. They're not going to be colliding with our new budgetary responsibilities going forward, are they?
So this is a full calendar year, just like we would want to have with no reduction in days, which would take a process if we were to do that.
Okay. All right, ready to take action? All right, let's vote. Oh, my bad.
Might need an emotion.
I move that we approve the adopted new calendar for the '24-'25 school year. Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the calendar, the draft calendar for the '24-'25 school year. Now let's vote.
Owen?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, without objection, meeting adjourned.